All right, it is October 23rd, this is planning board, we have a quorum. First up, we got Horton Farm to discuss a minor modification for the proposed street trees. Oh, they're not here, right?
Yeah, the builder Peter Bradley is away this weekend.
Well, I saw the plan, which is right here. This is pretty much what we discussed. I know that you said that on the original, on the original plan, conservation and tree warden was included, so.
Correct. There was a decision made by the board just reverting the planting plan. And it did have some conditions in there that required approval by the tree warden and conservation commission.
So, I mean, this is exactly what we talked about, and I'm good with it unless anybody's not. I would just suggest, yeah, we, the motion to approve this conditional on there.
Okay, so what I did was I did put together a draft record of vote today for your review, thinking that, you know, maybe you guys would go in that direction. So in that record of vote, I do have some new conditions, and it's essentially what you just said, Eric.
Okay.
Having the tree warden, the conservation, you know, sort of sign off on the plan as well.
Okay. What was the point of having the tree warden?
To be honest with you, I think the only reason why the tree warden got sort of, not swept up into this, but got included in this decision was because at the time, when I went back and looked at the 2010 meeting minutes, they reviewed this planting plan the same time that they did the scenic road hearings. So I think he was just involved with the scenic road hearing, so therefore he became involved with the street trees. Because typically, I've never seen this, like usually, street trees are part of the subdivision approval, and it doesn't go beyond that, it stays with planning board. So I do think this is a very interesting and unique decision. It's not that it's bad, it's just, I do need to have the tree warden and the conservation commission now weigh in on it, so.
Okay.
And that, you know, the conservation commission could come back and say, you know, rather than eliminating all of the 16 trees at the entrance, they may say we would like to see, you know, X number of trees. So I believe the way that I've written it does give them some, you know, there's some flexibility there in the decision. So in condition of this, I say the elimination or reduction of trees at the base of the roof to be approved by the conservation commission. And speaking with Rebecca today about it, you know, because we looked at the pictures that they had submitted previously, and she thought, yeah, there's the potential that they could reduce some of those trees. So I think it's a safe way to go.
Is it possible to comment upon this?
Identify yourself.
Sharon Chappala from Warner Road. I'm just concerned about reducing numbers of trees that, and as we're, as we're talking more and more about how we are going to respond to climate issues, reducing the number of trees seems not to be one of the things that we would like to make an easy or, or, you know, a simple thing to do.
So this is trees that are getting planted along their road. And essentially, we're reducing it, but for some reason, their plan had them a lot closer than what we call on our books for normally. So we just put it to what we normally have it. I think they had it like every 30 feet, and we put it to every 60 feet.
So it was every 80, it was every 40 feet, and then we're doing every 80 feet. And part of the reason why they asked for the reduction too was at the entrance of that development, there are already a number of significant trees and vegetated buffer. And the builder, he had indicated that, you know, he didn't want to have to take down trees to put up trees, it didn't make sense. So that, I think, was also part of his.
Oh, and then the other reason was, I don't know if you know the Horton Lane Road.
Oh, I do.
Oh, yeah, you're right next to that. He kind of sold the meadow, a view of the meadow. And some of the people who own those houses don't want the trees to be planted to block their view from the meadow.
Large trees have canopies that you can see through.
Anyway, we were just, we were just allowing them to put it to what we, our standard.
And the standard is 80 feet apart?
Yeah. We're not cutting, we're not cutting anything down, we're just.
But I mean, but you're putting saplings in, right?
Um, let's see what the plan is for.
What is that, three or four inch?
So the site, they have to be, it depends on the species, but some are five to six feet in height, some are 12 feet in height.
I think all, I think all of the.
Mostly 12 feet in height. They're not, they're substantial trees, but they're entirely.
It's a reasonable plan. But at 80 feet, the canopies will have room to grow and expand, not the ours. 40 feet, they get tangled up. And like you said, and like Eric said, the ones that we're eliminating are right down along the sugar where, I think originally they had expected they were going to have to clear all of that. But they didn't, so they left a lot of, there's a lot of old growth and shrubs and, you know, undergrowth there. So why would we want them to rip that out to put new trees in?
Right.
So that's where, you know, that, you know, it's a kind of reality on the ground, is just, we're just taking that into account.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, it's a fairly large meadow. I mean, it has been an eyesore in the neighborhood for many a year. So it's, it's nice that they're cleaning up the rubble that's there. But one, one would like to see an attractive grouping of trees in that area. And thinking that what we're talking about here is the need to be capturing more carbon in our planning altogether.
There will still be trees, it's just a reduced number.
And about how many fewer than originally planned?
I didn't do an overall count. At the entrance, they had asked to remove or eliminate 16. And then I didn't count the number of street trees, so it's something larger than 16.
Well, I mean, how many, there's one, two, three, four, five, six.
That's true.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. But actually, these look like, I mean, probably about 16. Yeah, that looks, that still looks close together. So maybe it's just these guys. Thirteen, so it's like 13 along Horton Farm Lane.
That's how many will be planted now?
So originally, it was like, we were calling for like 26, and now it'll be 13, essentially.
This plan here might be helpful to you, at least for the entrance. But you can see here, this is all natural vegetated area that they were planning on adding trees to, but again, taking down trees to replace here.
So this is, this is, I'm not sure what this.
This is sugar.
I know, I know that, but what does, what does the cross section mean?
That they were asking to remove those trees.
The removal of the requirement to add those trees. Okay, not to remove, okay, got it.
Maybe there's havoc there.
Some of it is actually.
And the other thing, the board wants to, like, wait, I can have Concom and the tree warden weigh in, and then you can take your vote on that November, it's up to you, November 13th. I talked to Peter Bradley, and he was okay with one or the other, so it's.
I'm curious.
Way inverse, and then.
That's fine, I mean, yeah. If they're not, or.
And that's sort of, I can sort of make the decision a little more concrete, I'd like his fall. Get rid of those conditions if needed.
Sounds fine. All right, next up, we have Ted Repolds and Adam Terry from Integrated Health to discuss a preliminary plan for a special, preliminary discussion regarding the submission of a special permit application for a recreational marijuana facility at 58 Main Street.
So I'm Adam Terry. It's nice to meet everybody. I work for Integrated Health Products. Ted was unfortunately unable to make the name. The purpose of us showing up for you tonight is that we.
It was hot.
Thank you.
Actually making her nervous.
It's a very small room, I'm a little uncertain of how to operate inside.
That's fine.
Remove my glasses, this close up. So, yes, Integrated Health Products are a product, cannabis product development company, a cannabis products manufacturer here in Massachusetts. We currently work with our sister company, Temescal Wellness, in producing and holstering. We've been to the town a couple times now to speak with you about opening this up. According to the zoning bylaws, we require a special permit in order to do these operations. We're in the middle of having a conversation about the host community agreement, it gets started. But I am the project manager for this, and will later, I'm going to have to submit numerous materials to you guys for the special permit. We don't have those materials yet for a preliminary review, as we're still going through the due diligence process. But once again, in front of you guys tonight, because this seems to be the first time you all are going through this process, as well as us, specifically with this municipal county. This will be the 10th municipal county that Temescal Wellness Integrated Health Products have been the first cannabis company inside that. So we're well familiar with going through this process for each specific one. I've been reading your special permit requirements, I had a couple of questions specifically about which requirements you guys are going to want to see out of these additional special requirements for cannabis. And just give you an overlay of what we intend to do, how we think it's going to impact the area from our current assessments, and let you know what our plans are for getting these special permit things done, and when we could plan to get it done.
Yeah, I guess, first off, if you could just give us an overview of, you know, what you're going to produce. I don't, it's not a grow facility.
It is not a grow facility, and it's not a retail facility. So what we do is we take dried cannabis material, so things that have already been harvested, dried, grown, intake it to the facility, this is all according to CCC regulations, so the cannabis control commission is a statewide entity that regulates the industry per the code of Massachusetts regulations. We intake that material, we extract it using either ethanol or hydrocarbons or carbon dioxide. We take the resulting extract, which is usually a sticky oil or sometimes a hard concentrate, and we convert that into edible products. We convert it into, it used to be big cartridges, the future of that being somewhat shaky right now. And then we convert it into transdermal patches, we convert it into oral sprays, powdered drinks. We have a whole list of products, which you would look at. The only reason you know it's marijuana is because it's in marijuana packaging. And then we transport that wholesale to different dispensaries across the state exclusively within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's the very high level overview.
How many facilities like that are there in the state currently now?
So there are currently zero facilities that only do products manufacturing. Everyone else that's currently operating is vertically integrated, such as our sister company, Temescal Wellness, which runs, essentially, they have their grow and product manufacturing facility in the same building down in Worcester. And then they run three retail dispensaries in other areas of the state, one of which is in Hudson, just off exit 26.
So why are you guys dividing it up?
So Temescal Wellness and Integrated Health Products are two separate entities. Integrated Health Products, since the beginning, has been a company that has developed products and developed systems, where the folks that employ chemical engineers, food scientists, people who work on the IP, the, you know, the management.
So you're not growers?
We're not growers, and so we're kind of separating into Temescal Wellness, which has always been a multi-state vertically integrated operator, they're their own business. And while we share a CEO, we are two distinct entities. So Integrated Health Products is currently having, you know, some amount of our products produced at Temescal Wellness, but they do not have the capacity or facilities to handle the growth that we think we're going to see here in Massachusetts. So rather than, you know, go through them, which we essentially make a royalty off what they actually manufacture, we want to go into business essentially for ourselves here in the Commonwealth and operate our own facilities.
Okay.
Would you sell only to Temescal or to any retail?
Any retail with a license in the state, yeah.
So, I mean, I think the big thing people would be worried about, especially neighbors, and I think you already talked to them, which was great. I've got some, a couple of the neighbors talked to me, and were very happy that you, you made the effort to.
So lots of people came out. I was already know it was going to show up, and we'd get a chance to talk to them, but a few came out, they were pretty vocal.
Yeah, it sounded like, yeah, it's the one I talked to said that she was reported to the rest of the neighbors.
Oh, that's good.
But, so, I guess, environmental, like, output, like, you know, whatever water, you know, do you hold the water that you use, or smells, noises, that would be like a major concern with our special permits.
Yeah, we hear you loud and clear on that. So, starting with water, since we're not a cultivation facility and we don't produce beverages currently, our water use is on par with what a normal office might be. There's not a large use of water that is facilitated other than maybe dishwashers that come into the facility. It should be either the same or less used than Cobham was, was using, because they would run water for cooling, heating, and cooling systems. There should be no expected increase in that water, I think it'll probably be less. Any water we would, we would pull up if we did get into full beverage manufacturing, which is not currently part of our products, we, mostly because of transport and product safety concerns. That would be in the product, so it isn't discharged back into, back into Fulton. We are going to have a full water workup done by discharging dealists once we start contracting with them for our due diligence. They're going to be a big part of the site plans. So they'll, they'll tackle the water part of it, and so.
So do, I assume Cobham already has a public well, so, yeah, that's correct.
I don't know if it's public or not, it needs to be private well.
Public water supply.
I believe it's a private well, that's.
Well, it's a private well, but it'd be considered.
Gotcha, understood.
Based on volume and.
Something that employees can come in and.
Port of health could be. The previous. Talked about that. Yeah, but so. And you don't need to talk to them anyway, so.
Yeah, I found it to be that.
But discharge wise, into whatever septic system and leaching field you have, you don't envision, like, any chemical output? That would, you know, impact.
Should the plant's discharge into the septic?
So the discharge is normal, you know, not water, it's dishwasher water. It's normal water from using the cafeteria that's there. That's the only water discharge that's currently from our system.
It's nothing in the manufacturing.
Yeah, so there's no processing with water in the manufacturing, and that's because our processes are based on solvent systems. Those solvent systems are closed loops, so the same solvent that extracts once gets restored and then reused, so.
So it's not like you're boiling it, you're.
No, no, it's not, yeah, so instead of like with coffee extraction, you're using all water. This is no water all, because it just doesn't work that way. The water is not soluble with the cannabis.
So you will need to have, you know, if you have a manufacturing facility, you'll have to have water in there. For even just for hand washing, general laboratory use, laboratory glassware washing?
Yes.
So my understanding is that's, that's considered industrial wastewater, which is separate than, you know, wastewater for, you know, bathrooms, kitchens, that kind of thing, sanitary wastewater. So my, my understanding, and we're not the board of health, and we're not an environmental consultant, but industrial wastewater, you cannot discharge into a septic system without a variance from the DEP.
So you're saying not like the standard, you're saying dealing with whatever you're dealing with, washing your hands or whatever.
So things like from the dishwasher that touched equipment?
Correct, or even a hand washing thing. So I went through this exact same thing with a company in Littleton. Littleton has no public sewer. And we were moving in there as a lab facility. And we had, you know, obviously bathrooms and kitchens, that's fine, that can be discharged into the septic system. But we had, you know, a small lab, and, you know, we had a sink in there, hand washing, you know, small amount. We weren't doing anything, kind of similar to yourself, we weren't doing anything. And the problem we ran into is you can't discharge, that's considered industrial wastewater, right? It's, it's in a lab, even if you have just a hand sink in the lab, just because something good, your solvent could get dumped down there accidentally, right? So that, that's what's considered by the DEP is industrial wastewater. And in order to discharge that into a septic system, you need a variance from the DEP, which takes years and years and lots of testing to get. So what most, most companies do in that situation is they have a tight tank for that lab water, which is a huge cost, right? And what we did, luckily, we had a small facility, and we weren't using much water, we just got a big 400 gallon thing on a pallet, and we would just, we had an external company. But it created a big problem for us, luckily, we were small enough that we were able to do that. But it's, it's just a concern that, you know, I'd really, I guess I'm just recommending, you know, reach out to the DEP to potentially an environmental, you know, group that deals with wastewater discharge, because I'm pretty sure that if you have any manufacturing, and you have any water in there at all, even just a sink or whatever, that is considered industrial, and you have to handle that separately then, industry.
It sounds like if you don't have much of it, then you probably don't need much of a tank.
Yeah, the one thing is, so for dishwashers, for hand things, we want to hook that up to a tight tank. I know in Worcester, the facility does have a tight tank, and that's because it was a cultivation facility, so they want all that water run off and not to go to there. A lot of that water also gets recycled. So I will check what's on site as well, because there may be a tight tank if Cobham is doing industrial.
They may have. Yeah, they may already have.
So I'll ask what's in that. Again, we're pretty early in the due diligence process here, so I have a lot of, a lot of catch up to do, but thank you for the recommendation.
Yeah, no, sure.
DPH, I've reached out a couple times, I finally got an email back from, I believe, the chair's assistant today. They referred me to the Neshoba, is it?
Neshoba Association of Board of Health.
Yes, that's, so I'm going to be leaving them a voicemail tomorrow, and we'll pursue that as well. But, yeah, we, we want to have, you know, a full conversation with the board of health too, because, you know, frankly, in the way that cannabis is, because our, our end of cannabis manufacturing is so, it's, it's not the way that people were thinking about cannabis 10 years ago, and this involves food product now. CCC and DPH have tried and been figuring out, you know, how they approach these things. In Worcester, for example, when I went to go get the kitchen license, they, even though the regulations specifically refer to cannabis edible products as not food, I was talking to the, you know, the department of, I think it was the Department of Public Health there, and they said, you're probably going to need a food permit for this. So, you know, we went through a whole surf safe and election awareness training, developed a hazard plan, all the same stuff, because it is food in the real, in the, in the real physical world sense, but, you know, once laws get involved, it. So we, we intend to seek a food permit as well for those areas which will involve that conversion of extract into edible products.
What kind of volumes are you talking about for like your extraction solvents, things like that? Are we talking gallons or thousands of gallons?
No, we're talking gallons. So the biggest system I've ever run, and that was out in California, where we were doing, you know, 10x volume of anything I've seen in Massachusetts, that was roughly like, they would at the most run 90 gallons in a day. So it's, it's pretty lean efficient.
Of solvent?
That was 90 gallons of ethanol at the time, yeah. So ethanol, just, you know, purified alcohol, and that was, again, recycled through the system. Anything that doesn't make it, you know, through the recycling system is, is put into hazmat waste. Luckily Cobham, because they were a previous manufacturer, has hazmat waste storage on site. And then that hazmat waste is picked up by a company which will, you know, come grab it and put it wherever that's supposed to be, but not, you know, it doesn't go down the drain, it doesn't go in a normal landfill. In terms of cannabis quantities, in the early days, I mean, we'd be lucky to secure a contract for hundreds of pounds a month. It may go up to thousands of pounds a month, but again, that's, that's kind of the scale of that in California, and we're kind of years away from that. Currently in the state of Massachusetts, there's only 670,000 square feet of licensed cultivation space. That, that number might have gone up in the last week, so there's a new facility approved. But we're talking such a restriction on actual amount of cannabis that we grow in this state that early days, we don't expect to have a ton of volume. And then as we grow out over five to 10 years, the facility itself is size is large enough to handle probably a few thousand pounds a month of cannabis, but that is stored in a room, twice the size maybe. So it's, it's a pretty condensed operation in terms of how it runs, because we're not doing bottled beverages at the moment. Even if we did, we would be serving only the Commonwealth and not, you know, other states. Unlike most breweries, we can't sell outside of the state of Massachusetts. You just don't have the same kind of volumes of facilities that you're looking at. Even, even a facility like that, I wouldn't anticipate we ever get into big beverage manufacturing.
So if you go out of state, it'd have to be legalized federally?
It would, and then on top of that, Massachusetts would have to rewrite, every state would have to rewrite their specific laws, because right now, in the code of Massachusetts regulations, it says you may not sell outside the Commonwealth, so. And that's a five to 10 year kind of timeline, I think, for actual development of federal interstate trade. Oregon and California and Washington are a little bit ahead on that curve, where they tried to push forward, but federal regulators said, no, this isn't happening until this is completely federally legal. So for the foreseeable future, this is a Commonwealth-only operation.
So where to see a final product warehousing, is that done on this facility or does it go somewhere else?
So final product warehousing before it's sold and goes to retail store on site, per the security regulations by the CMR in Massachusetts, you have to have a two-factor authentication interior vault, and that vault cannot have exterior walls. Cobham actually has a room that may be functional for that. I have to check the regulations to see if it needs to be completely like, you can't see through it, but they have this big cage inside, which.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah, when we went through, we saw that.
So that may be suitable, or it might not be, and we might have to just build actual physical walls. Honestly, looking at that, that's stronger than a She-Rock that you're going to, you're going to find, so. I prefer to use that, but we're going to go with what the CCC tells us we have to do for security purposes.
How many employees do you think you would have to start with?
So year one, no more than 10, because we don't anticipate we're going to have a large manufacturing. Like, again, there's just such a limited on supply. We expect to have about 10, year five, at the most, 75 employees, and I'll probably include people who are doing things like call center. So it'll be a mix of administrative, engineering, and actual operators, probably about half that'll be operators, running equipment, packaging, you know, any, any mix of that, sort of blue collar workers. And then the other half will be administrative services and engineering, and, you know. If, if, we are a company that has operations in other states as well that we've been working on, so, you know, we have a fairly large administrative burden that we intend to run through Massachusetts.
So you said that you'd be working out of the small building, the front building?
That would be the, yeah, that would be the starting place for us, most likely. There's a couple of things I have to check on, basically, the plumbing has to be, has to be checked on to see if it's suitable for those purposes, but it seems to be, from what I've seen, because they have a large, like, basically, there's a center wall there that has all their plumbing hooked up. We just need to make sure, basically, probably after the dishwasher in that area, just to make sure that that is, because that whole area, like, the areas where we operate are going to have to report with health regulations.
Why don't we just start in the big building that has them?
Most of these, we intend to use them for two separate purposes. One is going to be the, is going to be hemp-based CBD. So the lower building is CBD only, and that's.
Lower meaning the small buildings?
Yes, the 8,000 square foot building splits to the 36 that.
So you're going to use the lower building for what?
So that is hemp-based CBD operations. So that is, under the US Farm Bill last year, products that are derived from compliantly grown hemp in the US are able to be processed into products, and so we intend to use that for the first year. That means we can derive revenue immediately while we're still working on the licensing with the state for the THC operations. So the upper building is going to be all of the state-licensed CCC THC operations. I say THC in quotes just because we can also do CBD there, but it depends, like, there, there are two different regulatory systems. So you have hemp-based CBD, which is governed essentially by the USDA, and there's.
So you could sell that out of state?
That can be sold out of state, that's correct. And we've, we've been in conversations with MDR about that specifically, because they control the, the old laws, which were pre-Farm Bill. Massachusetts had a hemp program for that, that was governed by MDR, and they have specific licensure, legal requirements that are in accordance with that. When it comes to the actual processing of finished products, they've kind of kicked it to DPH. DPH is preferred to CCC, and then CCC is preferred to MDRs, we're kind of going around a circle there, but we'll, we'll get clarity on that pretty soon, hopefully.
And so the CBD process is the same as the THC, solvent-based now?
So we actually won't run extractions in that for seed, but for hemp-based CBD, because we can purchase that in its finished form, which is completely pure CBD, and that comes with a certificate of analysis from a licensed manufacturer.
And then you'll use that to?
Convert into tinctures, capsules, or edible products. It will have, although we are not required to by the, like, the Farm Bill law, we will also have the same security systems on the CBD building as well as the upper building.
Just doubling back, I know we talked about water, and I was interested in air and noise pollution as well.
Yes, so this is definitely a concern of the Fulton Woods Way residents specifically. So as far as discharge of air, everything is going to be on carbon filters and HVAC. We don't anticipate nearly any level of smell, in fact, we anticipate no smell coming out of, coming out of the building. The only time you have a smell involved is a little bit during the extraction process. Because the cannabis is dried, you don't have the same level of smells emitted from, as say, for a cultivation facility. The difference being, you know, during that harvesting process, when you grow the cannabis, the plant smells during the actual life cycle of it, but it's especially after you cut it down, turn it over and hang it in a room where it's, it's on dehumidification systems. Yeah, so you're basically running a big HVAC system to push all the water from the plant out into the atmosphere, and that's, you actually lose 99% of the smell molecules in that process. So what we're going to have is basically smells rubbed cannabis in the facility, so that, that. So what we're gonna have is basically smells rubbed cannabis in the facility, so that that one percent left over, I I can't imagine to be able to smell that even right next to the facility.
But with carbon filters, you're able to?
We put carbon filters on anyway, which should scrub any of that remaining stuff and that's gonna be in line in the HVAC system, seem. We'll probably use the same grade or at least close to the same grade stuff that we use in the cultivation facility. So to say, uh, you know, I I cannot imagine there'd be any odors, uh, at that point, um.
Um, that's just something technically we would just have to look into more like.
Sure.
Yeah, whatever standards, I mean, cause I know, um, Sterling, there was a facility, which I think is more of a, they were probably doing the drying process.
Yeah, they do a cultivation.
And and, um, neighbors were complaining about smell, but then it seems like they got taken care of, so I don't know, whatever they did filter.
They may have not had carbon filters to start, uh, or they may have had them, but not have them given to the HVAC system. Uh, we've seen this before, um, in different facilities, not ours, but, um, yeah, cultivation, if Asian facilities can get, get potent smell, and we don't wanna put them near residences.
And then noise, like fans, odors.
So noise, um, shouldn't be a problem, uh, there's, there are things that cycle for, uh, for twenty-four hours, but those are like refrigerators. So unlike a cultivation facility, we don't need a large, um, like multi-ton cooling system on the building. The reason they use those in cultivation facilities is to cool down large amounts of carbon dioxide, uh, to push into the grow rooms. Um, plants need a certain level of CO2 to grow them, uh, so we don't require that that large level chiller, so there shouldn't be anything cycling. Um, anything that's inside cycling is gonna be mostly used during the day, uh, there's certain amount of air compressors that are used during operations, but those don't need to run overnight, we plan to run a single shift.
So on the pollution track, is one thing we worry about in town is light pollution. Um, I imagine you're gonna need more security cameras and stuff like that, so I mean, I know, uh, you know, down lighting and stuff like that, on, you know, Golden Woods Way, you don't wanna be.
Yeah, they mentioned, they asked.
Daylight twenty-four hours a day.
I remember they, they mentioned there was like some sort of light that they asked if they could, like, the guy, one of the guys like wanted to shoot the PB gun, he said, not gonna let's, that's a.
Anyway, so our standard light fixtures are down lighting, uh, full cutoff.
Okay, so beyond anything standard that you would require for lighting the parking lot like regularly at night, I don't know, but you guys do have standards. Our camera's actually at night vision, so there's no need to put excessive lighting there, because it can see in the dark anywhere.
Um, I know that we do have for bigger facilities, we did have lighting schedules for a parking lot, so that would be something that we would.
Mm-hmm, so we were putting probably for lighting, whatever the minimum on that lighting schedule is and.
Yeah, I think we, we look for, uh, lumens plan, that, what's the plan, like the, like even Country Cover did it, the, you know.
Right.
The, the power of the lights in different times and whatever, I don't know, I don't know the exact words, but.
I I will get you the exact terminology I I I'm liking as well.
Yeah, lumens just mean the total measure output of a light, you know, so if you guys have a specific amount of lumens required in the parking lot, um, we do plan to also install gates along the, the curb cut, all the curb cuts along there, so that at night, people can't just go in there and say fuck. Um, and that was, that was also perceived pretty well by the residents, but it's something actually suggested, uh, suggested by the police chief, I don't know what him. We think it's a pretty good deal, we don't really need anybody in there, uh, the camera presence is gonna be, uh, can be well known by anyone in that, uh, in that area, because by regulation for the state, we have to actually have a hundred percent exterior coverage, so, um, not much is gonna happen in that parking lot without being caught on camera.
So you said at the start, you had questions for us about some of our.
Yeah, particularly in the special permit, mostly about the impact assessments, um, and what you guys are looking to see out of us. Um, the particularly the traffic assessments, um, we, you know, it says in here that the traffic assessment is required when there is an expect expectation, or I'm sorry, it's in the, in the special require, uh, requirement, um, guidelines, special permit requirement guidelines, that traffic assessments are required when there's expected to be, uh, a market increase in traffic. We don't expect there to be a market increase in traffic, it's at a hundred, uh, what an A B T increase, um, given that our employee cap in five years probably be seventy-five, we don't expect that. Um, so if you require us to do the traffic assessment, we absolutely will, uh, we actually have quoted by, Deshawn got it quoted through a different company for us, but we're, we're happy to pursue that, we just, I just wanna get, uh, an understanding of these four assessments, we have the environmental impact assessment, that, that's something that we, we intend to do. The fiscal impact assessment seems a little bit, uh, hairier to nail down, that's something we've kinda been having this conversation with Don Low about in terms of our host community agreement, because there is a community impact fee that we negotiate as a part of that agreement. And if that stands separately, uh, something that the, the planning board wants to see distinct and separate from our conversations about the host community agreement, um, I just wanna get a sense of what that means.
Well, we're, I mean, you know, we're not involved in the host community agreement, so, uh, that would tie in, like you're saying heavily, with the fiscal impact assessment, police, you know, emergency type things, road. We do deal with actually, you know, uh, egress and ingress road damage and stuff like that that we look at. Um, so I mean, that'd be more the fiscal impact that we'd be more interested in, I think, you know, like, what other fiscal impact would the planning board really be interested in? Just like damaged, basically damaged infrastructure.
Okay.
You know, whether you had these heavy trucks.
Burden of infrastructure, yeah. Yeah, so, so deliver, like how frequently would deliveries come in or out?
So as far as the, um, the cannabis product deliveries, um, those are done typically in vans. By the time we get to full operations, I expect that could be, uh, two, three times a week. Um, early days, it may be once a week or a couple times a month. Um, they're not, almost new deliveries in or out, cannabis or otherwise, are gonna be done in freight trucks. The only times that freight trucks will need to be on site are when we're delivering the equipment, which is gonna be the, you know, a couple times in the early days. Um, so we, we don't necessarily need for it, most of our materials come via normal ground, uh, transport, um, so I don't expect.
For transit kind of van kind of size?
Yeah, like, you know, like a UPS truck or a FedEx truck, uh, the, you know, the small ones, not the, the freights. Freight trucks are for large pallet shipments, which in the manufacturing end of things, we don't, like, when I see that at Worcester, for example, that's typically soil deliveries, uh, coming to pallets and those are plotted up to the loading dock. But we shouldn't actually have that much need for that loading dock there, um, is is my guess, based on the way that's set up. The only, I haven't looked at all the, the doors going out, we do need to find a secure door, basically, that we can up the, the, the delivery van for transportation of cannabis materials, um, right up to the loading dock, cause that wants to be under camera, but the, uh, the actual anticipation of freight trucks is minimal if any.
So I think, you know, looking at these four, we would heavily look at the environmental impact, just as we've talked so far tonight. We would wanna nail all the details down, ask them for what we've talked about. Fiscal impact, I think it's just infrastructure damage and and then you'll be dealing with police cost of emergency.
Yeah, we still kinda talk with the chief a couple of times.
And wherever that falls, that's not really in our jurisdiction, um.
Yeah.
So then traffic, um, we take it on a case by case basis.
Okay.
Um.
Do we know what, what, how least, uh, requirement was?
Um, I can find that out, I don't know.
Oh, I was told by them one twenty-five, but if you wanna. We, we, we have waived it in the past, basically it's a case by case basis, essentially. For instance, when Clinton's savings bank went in, um, we had recently just done an assessment across the street for some, oh, no, no, we, no, Clinton's savings bank did do an assessment, but when they were moving across the street, oh, when UMass Medical was building or something, we didn't require it, cause we already had the information, so it's basically a case by case basis, we'd have to look at the details.
Okay, sure.
We've been known to waive it, but if we require.
It's easy to get if you require it, I just wanna, you know, find out, you know, they, they are still applying at a cost, so if, if you guys require it, we'll do it. If you don't, then we won't.
Yeah, yeah.
Simple then.
We'd have to look at the details.
Sure, um, and by the way, uh, I didn't, uh, get a chance to get like full copies, but we do have a, a fairly detailed proposal, it's about sixty pages. I know it's available upstairs, but, uh, I think most of you guys have email addresses on the, the planning board website.
She can go to those.
Yeah, give Eric and show.
Okay, she, she, uh, already has a copy, so, um, that contains a lot more detail that I'm gonna be able to go into right now, but, um, again, and it's still a little bit of a higher level or a lot of these, like, so I've made the, you know, the list, I've looked at the checklist of special items, cause that's a lot of very particular detailed work that we're gonna have to go through, but we're gonna be gathering all that over the next month and a half.
Yeah, I mean.
So what happens to the spent marijuana units after you've extracted it?
That's a good question, so the spent mari- uh, the spent marijuana material, um, is incorporated with usually dirt at about like a, a five to one, ten to one ratio, depending on the, the CCC's requiring, basically to render it unrecognizable and then it's, uh, put in normal waste.
Uh, so you just ship it somewhere?
Uh, trash bags, dumpster, uh, pickup system.
Okay.
Yeah.
So basically it's not then left in it.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing left in it, cause it's already been extracted, but the state requirements are just to be sure incorporated with other like trash, basically, like, so we use basically a grinder, so when it's incorporated, you, you, we have this like big shredder thing that, or I think, I don't know what it's called, crusher or not, but it's a bunch of big blades and a thing and you throw the cannabis material and feed simultaneously in, uh, dirt, or you can use a power board or something, we'll probably just use dirt, uh, to do that, um, and then that gets, that gets pushed in a lot of dumpster that's simply removed. Uh, later on, so that's the most required, that's a large dumpster, sort of out of padlock, uh, that the, uh, the, the waste people will have access to.
So, um, are you locked in on potentially using this facility or are you looking at a couple of options right now?
So we are looking at a couple of options, we're not completely locked in just yet, we're going through the diligence period with sellers, so, you know, things that we still have to do is we still have to get Deshawn in there to look at and do a, all the survey, we still have to, still have to get Pascas in there to actually check to see if there's, you know, past problems that we don't know about, places we've used in three years, so a certain amount of due diligence, I don't know, so we're not a hundred percent locked in yet, but we are, you know, hoping to, to make this work, it's definitely attractive.
So based on that and based on whatever you can, you know, whatever your negotiations end up with a community impact agreement?
Yeah, a big part of it is the HCA, because.
HCA, the impact.
The, yeah, the post community agreement, excuse me, sorry for the, the charging, you know, um, so, you know, making sure that we can still, uh, run a viable business with the, with the, uh, still, uh, with that fee in place, uh, is a big part of it, making sure that all of the impacts that we have on the community are mitigated by any money that we pay, um, so that, you know, the town is taken care of and that those, those fees are paid for, um, but that we're not paying so much that we can't run a sustainable business in the area. So that, uh, that is going, going off the town, straight right now.
Do you ever envision needing to, uh, expand the buildings beyond, you know, what they are?
No, the facilities are well sized enough for, for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, uh, for our needs in perpetuity, as far as I can tell. I've been doing this for a couple of years, so it should be, should be alright, um. I guess one other question I have is, um, so I have a butters list, uh, that we're done with the assessor's office, uh, but recently I did get my hands on a map that was filed with the, with Land Court, um, that showed that basically there's been some slight alterations here to this, uh, that were happened over this recently in August, I don't know if, if the planning board has a talk to.
Yeah, there, there's some lot line adjustments.
But that's in GoPro though.
I don't know if that was this August, so I'm not aware of anything that recent.
But that failed, right?
No, 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 this is, there was a lawsuit, I thought. Yeah, this was something other than what we were trying to do.
This is between.
This wasn't telling you, this is.
No, this was between Cobham and, and Atlantic Microwave, yeah.
Gotcha, so I just wanted to make sure that was gonna.
It's the east, it's the east property line, right?
I don't know what direction.
Remember, remember, cause they said, they said they were like right on, part of their building was part on the property line and they, it was that one seventeen holdings, the property you had to store it with.
Yes.
They had to buy a strip of land from them, because part of their building was on their land, remember?
I, I don't remember those.
That, that is a part of it, I know, I've been a bit of looking into it with the titles, um, so there was basically a building, they said the larger building, uh, up top was, was basically running over this plot line, so it looks like there was an approved subdivision made to, to resolve that dispute, which seems to be quite an old dispute for them.
Yeah, they bought a little section of land to, so they would be within variance.
Maybe have that endorsed in our plan, I believe.
Yeah, I, so I just wanna make sure, because these are the butters lists, uh, for that guy from the assessor's office upstairs. Uh, I just wanted to make sure, uh, you guys were aware, because it seems like the parcels that we are buying are all of the new subdivisions as well, just to make sure basically the building that we're buying is on land that, that the seller owns.
Yeah.
Um, and so when we submit these with the special permit, um, that there's not anything more updated, we can get our hands on them, because, uh, basically I got these from Cynthia, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and so if, I haven't been able to find any updated maps of, maps other than the one filed with Land Court, so it doesn't seem to be on the online GIS map, the Google Maps just yet, so I just wanna make, uh, you guys aware, so this can become an issue later on when you're reviewing.
So what are you asking us if this is just?
I just wanted to make sure these maps are, like specifically, these butters maps are okay, because.
There's no new development in that area besides Golden Woods Way?
Yeah.
No, um.
I don't think that would, what, what was disputed there won't change.
Okay.
I am a little curious, do you have the plan that you, from Land Court, because it should be, I assume it would be the same plan that the board endorsed for me and our plan.
I don't think I have a printed copy, but I, you know, the digital copy.
Okay, cause Cynthia, Cynthia disputed that, I'm doing a.
I did, I did actually talk to Cynthia's too, she said she was, she was.
Where is she at now?
So. Just from my records, not managed.
Yeah, I think Deshawn, well, just Deshawn.
It was, yeah, when I, when I called Deshawn just the first time, they, they called.
So that's a small building.
You should have.
And, um, you know, a section that was right on the line?
Mm-hmm.
And so basically we have a site set back, well, actually they were even over in their land, so they bought Worcester land from this.
Yeah, actually.
Which is also Worcester.
Yeah, is it here?
And we, we, oh, is it here?
Yeah, so here's the, the board endorsed it.
It's basically Worcester.
Okay, okay.
No, that is the same land.
So this is actually the, the updated map it was like, so whereas this used to cut through, they basically purchased this here, so, uh, I just wanna make sure if you were all aware, like the shape of this is just different than what's on the map.
So many, you know. Uh, I agree, yes, I don't have that extra piece of land to push.
Uh, it didn't seem to push the butters actually, cause it pushes out this way exclusively, it didn't seem to affect, uh, the, the properties there.
Okay. I think that's about it, I mean, basically our, our special permit process is to protect the neighborhood and, you know, we have wording in there as such, you know, things detrimental to livelihood, any type of air, noise, environmental type issues. Uh, I think we look at like hours of cooperation, lighting, um, ingress, egress, I think it's fairly standard for a small town, like what we're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything outrageous.
Adam, for the butters list, and Jenny Jacobson may have mentioned this to you when you were going through the, the setting up, the hearing for the board's law amendment. Um, we realize now that the five hundred foot offset detection cap for all of the residents out in Golden Woods Way, so if you'd be kind enough when you submit the butters list, just change with that entire neighborhood, cause essentially there was, they're the most concerned. I would like to be able to notify all of them, even though they're outside that five hundred foot, I think for this particular project.
So you just wanted to mail officials the butters notice to all the residents?
So do the five hundred feet, but then just in addition to that, if you don't mind, also just make sure you're incorporating all of the residents and.
Well, it doesn't look like the five hundred feet, if this is a five hundred foot line, I was just looking at the, the.
So this is a five hundred foot line.
Parallel one seventeen, here it's slopes. So, but if you're notifying the whole neighborhood, if you notify the whole neighborhood.
And we, we have a force.
More than covering the.
It sounds like, it sounds like you're already doing.
For that public meeting, I, I dropped letters in everybody, but I guess I ran short one and that woman did show up and she couple of left out. Um, I did submit those letters, we'll do it again.
If you don't mind, it's just.
Yeah, no problem at all, um, they, they're already aware, so what are we hiding from them at this point? Uh, we've made it pretty clear that we want to work with the residents, we wanna be better neighbors than Cobham never was. Um, I think we can accomplish that, because manufacturing microwaves is pretty complicated, we're doing what we do is not that complicated.
Yeah, yeah, um, is the HCA a public hearing?
It is.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not something that's done?
Yeah, so the, we're gonna have the conversation with, uh, Don Low about what it should be, uh, he'd been indicated by the selectmen that he's the one to talk to about making sure, but they're, they're gonna have to vote on it, so that's gonna be the board of selectmen.
So you're working on it with Don?
Yes, but the, they're, the board of selectmen will vote on it and if that meeting is November twenty-first, I don't know if there's been official, uh, published notice.
Sure, I believe so, yeah.
I thought I had my email, but I couldn't find it, uh, I'll go back. So we're gonna be there, you know, publicly, that'll, Ted will be there, that was just the only meeting he wasn't able to make.
So then if that goes through and then your other due diligence turns out that this is the property you want, when would we expect a application?
So, uh, part of that, Erica said, were you, are you still working on a specific special permit application for this, or should I can just submit the normal one to?
It's up to the board, so I was going to develop, I just haven't done it yet, develop a separate application for marijuana establishments, this is a separate use in our schedule of permanent uses, um, however, he could use our standard special permit that we have for business, limited business and industrial.
I don't really see it being that different than, I mean, what would be different?
Well, we have a separate file for marijuana establishment, whatever fire.
So just any back file references would be slightly different and.
It would just be references.
There, there may be some additional signups that are needed or checkups, but.
Yeah, I mean, the checklist will be slightly longer.
It may, may just be an addendum to the standard.
The, the main gist. The main gist, you know, what we'd be looking for, what to change.
I'm happy to not decorate one, unless we're.
I just don't, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I've been trying to put up an argument here first.
I, all I'm saying is I feel like our current special permit, we're gonna come, you know, touch everything that we want to touch.
It's just the, it's just the application, so.
I think if you wanna change the title. Is some references, I don't think you need to do.
Let me just double check to make sure that our current application isn't missing. I think that's important, all that that should be on there.
Yeah.
And then I'll get back to you.
Based on, um, what I know today in terms of my, uh, the timeline, um, due diligence is ongoing for parts of November. Uh, unfortunately, I planned a vacation before we start this project, so I'm gonna be gone for part of November, kind of permitted. Uh, I took a vacation this year.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, I wanna say early December, uh, we're probably not gonna submit before the HCA vote. So if that's November twenty first, then Thanksgiving happens. I'm hoping early December, uh, I'm not trying to interfere with anybody's holidays though, so I don't, I don't anticipate we're gonna require, we don't, we're not on a timeline where we have to have this done by January or anything like that. So whatever's gonna work, uh, I'd expect to have the materials done by mid December, uh, early to mid December and then we can work on the, the timeline for some middle.
Yeah, so we have one meeting in December. So it will likely, the, the public hearing process, because you know, now it's on the paper, it'll probably get better. It will likely fall out in, in January even, if you submit in December.
I, I can see if I can get that expedited, but it's, it's gonna be just, you know, there's special term, the checklist, it's not short and we want to make sure we're thorough, so.
I think our only, um, meeting date in December, just given the holiday, is December.
Uh, and when that submission is done, is that I, I come in person and submit all the copies to, or does it need to be digitally through that?
Both. So you'll have to submit, um, a digital copy and then, um, the, whatever the necessary number of part, um, required copies are in the application. Cause I think I distribute it not just to this board, but that I give copies to like fire, police and.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, is there anything else I can answer for you, yes, man?
Good.
Can I just circle back?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to circle back for my, for my notes. So the, the various solvents that you use, you had mentioned, um, can you name them again? So.
So hydrocarbons, that includes, uh, butane and propane, uh, normally used to, you know, grow those, uh, but higher grade. Uh, ethanol, two hundred proof ethanol, so basically pure alcohol. And carbon dioxide, so that's usually done through a process called supercripole, uh, carbon dioxide extraction.
Okay, and then any of these solvents, like when they're going to be excepted, when you're doing the extraction process, does it ever get released in a gas form that would end up like, you know, outside?
Yes, there, there are small amounts released. It's a closed loop system. So what happens is basically when you go to collect, uh, your extract, even though most of your solvent has been already boiled and put back into the tank, there'll be a residual amount that is released into the room and then that's run through an explosion proof fan. All the solvent work is done under, uh, class one division one environment. So that basically just means all the electronics fully enclosed, all the fans fully.
Sparks, yeah.
All spark proof, all fireproof, then in a room that's higher fiber rating. Um, but that tends to be maybe, uh, I wanna say a twentieth at the max, like a five percent maximum of the total solvent use, uh, would be released in that way. Because essentially it's what's like still left at a very low pressure in a system when you remove the extract at the bottom. Uh, I'll save cards in case anyone wants to reach out to me later.
Were there any questions, anybody?
I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just answering this, I have a report with Bolton Independent. I was wondering if you could just tell me when you met with the neighbors on Bolton Way?
That was, I think it was a week ago. No, it was last Thursday, October seventeenth.
And what was the second high propane in what?
So propane, propane butane and then ethanol, which is, uh, the same alcohol that is in, you know, vodka, but we use purified.
Okay, I just didn't catch.
We use vodka.
I didn't catch, I didn't catch butane. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I'll take a card.
Sure.
Absolutely, reach out anytime.
I think we'll be publishing our next meeting notice in the Bolton Independent, so.
And how many vans per day did you anticipate?
Vans per day, uh, incoming, outgoing, more than one per day at, at max use.
Oh, at max use.
Yeah, two to three per week.
Yeah, two to three per week.
Do we read, was it one shift to two shifts?
It's one shift. Yeah, usually runs seven to three, yeah. We like to run off shift, mostly because it's easier to start manufacturing operations early in the morning. And second, because you avoid the traffic. I go on first taste to one seventeen, less traffic, just tonight, because, uh, all the other times I've come here in the middle of the day and then it took like four cycles of the light at four ninety-five to even just get on the road.
Well, on that front, hopefully the project that is currently working will, will fix a bunch of that.
That'd be great.
Because we're adding a left hand turning lane up here that will hopefully alleviate some of that.
Oh, yeah, that would be helpful, that, because that turn there is, is risky.
You, you avoid a lot of it by being on that side. Your, your potential, your potential neighbors across the street, Paragon, have major, you know, issues with that, so they're hoping that, I don't know, this work will.
Well, I live in Cambridge, so I come up route two, but so from, from here it's fast to take car on eighty-five, but from there it's actually, uh, faster to go one seventeen east. So, uh, I'm glad to be going the other direction.
So are you the main engineer there, or are you?
Yeah, so I have a degree in chemical engineering from UMass Amherst. Uh, I did all of the original extractions, uh, designs for this company, all of the original crop development. I still have the engineering division essentially. I mean, it's, it's hard to call it a division, there's not that many of us, but, um, you know, I work with fire protection engineers, uh, and architects and all sorts of other people to get these systems online. I usually end up working with the fire department, uh, the police department, um, anyone else that's required to stamp a system to make sure that it's safe and ready to go.
And how did you find this facility, just to start with?
This facility in Bolton came to us through another partner that we were talking to for potential, uh, partnering on this project. I'm not sure how they came to be aware, uh, particularly of this property, possibly through a Realtor, possibly just through, these are guys that have a lab in Littleton that is going out of business. They were thinking in the canvas industry. At this point, they're probably not, but, uh, we saw the property and, um, you know, canvas real estate is relative, is becoming less rare than it used to be, but, uh, finding a, a building that used to be manufacturing, uh, and being able to go into that as manufacturing, that's pretty new. Usually you have to, you know, gut entire buildings to do this, um.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so this is, it, it happens to be a right time, right place, right time.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are, really would like that they can build in two, a big field, so.
And we, there's a, you know, I think we can make, I, I, I do know exactly when I said this, probably be the most secure building in Bolton, just by the, probably were required operated by the state.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, I would actually, we had the chance to bring the fire chief and the police chief to the Wister facility, show them our security systems and our fire protection systems. Um, and I think they were generally pleased with what they saw.
And do you need a feed to the police station at all?
Yeah. Now, our security system, so we go through American alarms based in, uh, I'm sorry, in Arlington. Uh, we get basically their gold package, so in complete coverage, interior, exterior, high definition cameras that can tell that there's between a person and a car that record, uh, at all hours of the day, uh, for, I think ninety days is the minimum, and I think it's sort of a hundred and twenty days on a server. Uh, that server is backed up, uh, by a generator in case of power failure. Generator only kicks on if the, the normal power gets out. Um, and, yeah, you, I mean, you can zoom into a specific timestamp and that's what the CCC does. So the CCC, when they audit, they do it randomly, they do it unannounced, and usually they do spot checks, so they'll just pick a particular, uh, issue and say, they'll walk up to security and say, show me this camera at this time, print it out and then they'll review it. Um, so, exterior systems are pretty tight and we think that we can, you know, make a market improvement in that area. Since I've looked at your zoning maps, your zoning bylaws, I'm pretty sure that's the only area in Bolton where you can do anything in canvas. And, you know, for what it's worth, I think this is gonna be the least impactful use that, uh, any canvas business could be, no traffic.
Not, 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 the manufacturer versus the growing seems like it's pretty much.
Yeah, is that the water issues, or not traffic issues?
Not smell issues.
Yeah, you know, odor, well, odor you'd have to deal with either way, you know.
We, you know, we should be, you know, unnoticed once we get set up there. Um, and that's the one.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah, so much for you. Okay. I'm sorry, we're running, that's your time.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, it's important.
It's important, yeah, it's important. Uh, we had talked about in one of those preliminary meetings about design review and I didn't know if that's something you wanted the board to weigh in as well.
That is actually a good question.
Um, did you want to trigger design review for this because it's an existing building or not?
Are you doing any significant exterior renovations?
No, there's, there's no renovations. We'll probably scrub it down, it's been out of use for a couple of years, but no, no tree line changes, no parking lot changes, uh, no changes to the exterior of any of the buildings. Except for those gates.
Uh, I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
We're not gonna ask them to improve something, huh?
I wanted to make sure that it, you know.
That is appreciated, thank you. I, I meant to ask about that. I didn't mean to break over.
I think if you did like a renovation, then it would probably, but, um, if you're not changing anything, I don't see the need to put you through that.
It seemed like the DRV is mostly for, you know, basically how it fits into the character of the town.
Yeah.
And since we're not changing anything, it shouldn't.
It's, it's no, no more offensive than it currently is.
Hopefully it'll be less. Because, uh, you know, one of the, one of the residents of Bolton Way, his name is David, said that people are usually throwing a lot of trash, uh, around there and please now some will be.
Well, it's, it's.
So, yeah.
So we, we walked through that facility a couple of years ago and I was actually pretty impressed how well they kept it up.
Yeah.
They do, they did actually a decent job. I think they've been still running some of the HVAC.
Yeah, they must be maintaining.
Yes, they wanted, well, they want to be able to sell it eventually. And I think one of the things that's preventing them was that subdivision dispute.
Yeah.
Um, because if you have a building on somebody else's land, have you sold that whole, uh, building?
But yeah, walking, walking through it, I was pretty impressed with, you know.
I was three years in, some of the bathrooms are not looking so good. We'll fix that. Um, yeah, so it's, it's really just clean, like cleanup is mostly what we intend to do. As far as landscaping goes, I mean, we don't make, in, intend to make changes. We intend to make sure to cut the grass.
Yeah, so I did expect to see critters running all over the place in there and there weren't.
Yeah, the only reason I, I mentioned the pest review is because the police chief mentioned that they used to get a lot of false alarms because like rats would chew through the wires. So I do want like that, like put up a red flag man, like I'm gonna call pest company just to vet it, you know?
Definitely do it.
Um, you know, the thing is you never really know until you bust open a wall and cockroaches pour out, uh, if there's gonna be problems there. Don't expect that, but it's, that's gonna be part of the due diligence. And so we're hoping the police, the police department actually has, uh, less impact than they currently do because they won't be getting false alarms anymore, uh, from rats chewing through wires.
Yeah.
And then just my last question, a little bit of just curiosity. You said the supply is limited right now?
Right now, I.
So where are you gonna be getting your supply?
The same place as it's coming from now. Um, so we're hoping to secure some supply chain agreements, uh, because the THC licensing is likely going to lead us possibly into twenty twenty-one based on the current wait times on that list. We're hoping to have that sorted out by then. I anticipate, so I said six hundred is gonna be sat thousand square feet. I believe there'll be two point two million, at least there's basically two point two mil, uh, like another million and a half on the waiting list right now for approval. So I expect the situation to clear up a little bit more by twenty twenty-one. It'll probably still be competitive, but, um, it's, it's all gonna come from within the state. If we can't get supply chain agreements, then we're not gonna be doing very much business there.
Now, does Temzakal do cultivation?
They do cultivation.
But you don't get your supply from that?
We will probably get some, uh, but not all. They're, you know, they have their own needs, uh, for selling, uh, and so we're hoping to secure some supply chain agreements. We hope that we've built enough goodwill with the people we work with that, uh, they will want to sell us canvas in the future, but they, you know, they're currently sourcing from other people as well right now because there's, you know, the demand, supply curve in the state is really out of luck because the state commission moves so slowly.
So you said currently there's what, like seven hundred thousand square feet?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Uh, what's like the build out in the next five years for growth facility?
So as far as I can, I can see maybe about two years in the future. I expect there to be up to two and a half million square feet. Some of that will be outdoor.
Oh, so it's going from seven hundred to two and a half million?
Yeah, that's, that's roughly what our estimates are now, you know, some of that's.
So in two years, hopefully that, that pressure of suppliers.
It'll be alleviated. I don't, I still think the, the demand a lot defeats the supply at that point. More people will probably be able interested in canvas as it's sort of the stigma sort of alleviates and more people are interested in things that like we do. So once more people are used to it being around and they realize there are options besides having to actually smoke something, uh, more people will probably participate. Um, so I expect demand to continue to rise, but hopefully supply starts rising faster. And the CCC is well aware of this problem, um, that they're not moving fast enough. I don't think they've figured out how to solve that yet because they have a lot of their, as you can see, there's a lot of regulations here, or I guess you've pointed to your regulations, but there's a lot of regulations, and the repack CMR itself is like a hundred and twenty pages. And they have a lot of enforcement, due diligence of their own to do on each and every one of these facilities that comes before them. So they've barely managed to get past the list of people who are already operating, medical operators, um, and were, you know, what they, the, the vote was three years ago now, next month. Um, so it's, it takes a while to get this up and running. I'm hoping they've figured out a way to open up this process moving faster because right now the, the list of, the list of people waiting for their application to be approved is growing faster than the people getting approved. So, you know, there's a good chance like, you know, if we, if we wait for another two years and we jump down the list, if they're trying to do things the way it is, it may take ten years to get the license at that point. So we want to get through this, uh, this HCA process so we can get on the list because we don't need to have a special permit place to get on the list. We, and then we can, you know, go through the special permitting process, but once we get the HCA done, we can get on that list and then, you know, we, it, it doesn't matter how long it takes us. If the special permitting process takes a year, that sucks, but, uh, you know, I don't expect it to, but we at least can keep going, you know?
Well, you just heard all that questions for special permit process. Basically what we'll ask you again.
Yeah, and I hope to have better answers next time. Or at least more.
More detailed, specific answers. We like to be thorough when we can, so.
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you so much.
Anything else, Eric?
I, I just, just to, to be clear, this is for recreational, not medical, right?
It is recreational, medical. Under the medical laws of Massachusetts, you still need to be vertically integrated, so we can't actually do medical only, um, because we would have to also run a growth facility in a retail and we don't wanna do that.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, Eric. Uh, do you want me to keep this there?
Oh, it doesn't matter, you can.
All right. So next we got, I'm gonna consider a letter of support for MVP grant. It's a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant program. I actually watched the board of selectmen meeting that you discussed this.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, this is.
You discussed MVP.
No, I didn't. That was a separate, completely separate, uh, topic. That was the microtranscendence that I'm, with other magic communities on. Um, so this is, um.
Yeah, I just missed them off.
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, well, just give us the details then.
So, um, Conservation Commission, actually Conservation, right, Conservation Agent is, um, sort of, uh, leading the charge on this. She's going to be submitting a grant um, to this program and essentially to, it's for, um, it's a for-profit grant to hire a consultant to help us, um, develop our own, um, you know, climate change and resiliency um, plan and to figure out, you know, what are the priority projects in town. Um, and if we.
This was on, in our selectmen's meeting, I'm pretty sure.
It probably was. It was probably with Rebecca.
Yeah, with Rebecca, so.
Yeah, it was Rebecca. Um, so that's, you know, and so essentially she just came to me and said, hey, do you think plan board would be willing to write a letter of support as part of the application, just to make it that much stronger? And of course, of course we will. Um, so that's really it. And the idea is, you know, obviously we wanna have this plan in place. It, you know, kinda goes hand in hand with what we're doing with our hazard mitigation plan, which we updated last year, as well as being a current community and uh, reducing our energy use, um, through that program. So, um, and then there'll just be one more box we can check for when we apply for other grants with the state, which make us look that much better, so.
Yeah, sounds awesome.
So in your packet is a draft letter. Eric, if you wouldn't mind.
You guys, are you, are you here to say anything about it?
No, we're, 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 just, yes, do it. How about that? Wait, waiting to know.
Did you want to motion to?
This is a, a letter, were you offering this or were you just waving paper?
Uh, no.
That's, that's.
It's very generic. Nothing, nothing special.
I moved, we, um, uh, signed the letter of support for the MVP grant application.
Second.
On my favor?
Hang on.
So I should just sign this one? And. Discuss potential articles.
I apologize, gentlemen. I wanted to do, make more in my analysis and I did not. So I think tonight all I really wanna do is just confirm the, um, potential articles that I'm gonna sort of begin research on. So, um, and actually, so I have a meeting minutes for last, last evening.
I know we're gonna get a copy, but you know, so, do we miss anything in there?
I, can I ask just a question? I don't know, um, when we voted at the annual town meeting, like I've been reading about the mosquito, um, committee, advisory committee. Will they, do you know they'll have the power to put in spraying and stuff without the town voting on it?
So what we voted on was if the town was going to, uh, So what we voted on was that the town was going to, um, put, um, to put money towards paying for the mosquito program, right? That's what we voted on for the mosquito, what is it?
The mosquito control project?
Yeah, remember we voted on that at the annual town meeting, whether we were gonna allocate like thirty something thousand towards the spraying and the town voted it down?
Yes, yeah.
We voted it down many times in the past, yeah.
So, anything out of budget would have to go towards town meeting, whether, uh, whether if it was something, if they fit it in a budget somehow, then, then it might just be board of selectmen. It's not on the agenda.
Well, it's, yeah, it's not planned. It's not even our issue.
No, no, but I'm just answering your question.
But normally that'd be an ongoing expense, so it'd be something that would have to be incorporated into the budget and we'd have to get voted on. And, and the, you know, the, the, in the past mosquito control people have wanted, you know, basically, you know, town meeting, you know, to, to, to approve it or, or the, or the town has required it to go through town meeting.
Yeah.
Because it is a long-term thing and it is something that a lot of people have strong feelings on on both sides.
So I guess what I'm saying is, um, the town didn't necessarily vote down spraying, we voted down the allocating money towards that particular project. Is that correct?
Difference.
Well, what, that's, um, so it's not like we banned spraying.
No, no, it, no, it didn't ban spring, but it did not.
It did not approve.
It did not approve contracting with.
Yeah.
Central Mass mosquito control.
Yeah. So I, if the board of selectmen and the board of health chose that they wanted to do that, you know.
It would have to go to town meeting.
Would it?
Yeah.
No.
It's, it's thirty thousand.
Put it in their budget.
If they would, they, they would have to put it in their budget for next year.
Oh, but they, they. We'd have to ask for a budget increase.
Yeah. They, 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 they could not come in.
Right.
And say, well, we, we found thirty thousand in, in, in spare change in, in the, uh, in our, in our seat cushions, so we gotta do mosquito control.
Yeah. That's probably what would happen.
It would probably be in the budget discussion.
It's always had to go through the budget discussion and through town meeting and. I think it's gone through at least, I would say probably three times now.
But.
Still beating out the community preservation.
But you should probably ask Brian, you should probably ask Brian Boyle and advisory about that, because maybe there is a chance like to turn the budget, but that's not our, that's not our jurisdiction, so.
Advisory would be who to ask?
Board of health.
Board of, board of health, advisory, board of selectmen.
Okay.
Definitely not us.
Okay.
There's no, I'll tell you what, we're not working on any, um, spraying omelette.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So it wouldn't be us.
Okay.
So your meeting minutes have.
They've done, so.
Things that we talked about.
Yeah, so I will, uh, investigate designer review board guidelines, that means residential type developments.
Yeah.
We'll look into bed and breakfasts, short-term rentals, and then we'll circle back on correcting all the, um, the business rental. Going to.
Yeah, yeah, it's be a light year.
I don't think that's a light year at all. That's all, I think those are really good.
It's not a non-controversial year.
Yeah, it's a non-controversial, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna get attacked.
So bed and breakfasts will be interesting, bed and breakfasts will be interesting, cause I've started to look into it a little bit, like I was looking at Vasjan Hala and what they have to definitions and it really depends on how many rooms you're letting, what can you constitute as a bed and breakfast or there's, there's different.
Yeah.
Sort of levels of it, so I'll, I'll have that for the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I just know there's, there is a couple in town that could maybe be expanded if, if they were a board, you know?
You showed the fee and loo schedule, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, did I miss that?
Well, I just can't remember.
Yeah, did we, Mark, we talked about that, huh?
I would love to.
Okay, I apologize.
Clear that up.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I, I think the schedule is good. It's the enforcement piece of it, the, the.
Yeah, but I think we need to, we should change what we have currently in order to make it better enforcement.
But, but don't we buy, dividing it up per building permit like we did, don't we do that?
No, the problem is.
When they sell off the lots.
Open firm comes in, here's the subdivision plan, they get approved, they turn around and sell all the lots to people.
Yeah.
Now. They can. Each person coming in, ha, now effectively has a, 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 a fee and loo that they didn't know that they would, that they would have otherwise.
Yeah. And so rather than a homeowner coming in here crying.
I think the CME lots that have come in that.
Yeah.
We've had to, to kind of exempt from.
It would be a builder instead coming in.
But I mean, basically that would be, you know.
You're hiding the fact that that money is owed, it's owed.
Yeah, but.
Who would be in this group who looks like that?
But it, it just, I mean, ju- just to prevent us from having the, um, yeah.
That's, I mean, I think.
Whatever we can do is not be put in awkward positions, that's fine, I mean.
That they put on, they post a bond or we have a lien on the property.
Something.
We have to have something that's just.
Yeah.
It just triggers automatically and there's none of this, they come in, oh, I didn't know that that was there.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I don't wanna have.
Okay, we'll add that to the list.
I definitely don't wanna be keeping people out of their houses.
Yeah. Yeah, and we don't wanna be, you know, and we don't wanna be, you know, basically telling people, well, yeah, you owe this money, you know, go back to the, uh.
Yeah, right.
See, i- if you can find the developer. Yeah, go, go talk to, you know, go see member, whatever, and it's just. A terrible way to, to enter the community.
Yeah. Anything else?
Just a few more meeting minutes.
So, everybody ready?
Yep.
Who do we approve minutes for the, uh, for the nineteen, for the nineteen meter?
Second.
Favor. And who do you turn?
Second. All right.